And welcome to the March 19th, 2024, meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Councillor Cragan, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Cragan?
Here.
Councillor Cruz?
Here.
Councillor Gina Tally?
Here.
Councillor Fleming?
Councillor Green?
Here.
Councillor Schultz?
Here.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Here.
Councillor Walsh?
Here.
President Zarella?
Here.
Councillor Boishman?
Present.
Councillor Kuchar?
Here.
Ten members present.
Thank you very much. We have, sorry, just a moment. We have no one on Zoom registered to participate in public forum. We do have a number of individuals who have signed up on the sheet that was placed in the back. First, we have Jacqueline Wetchy. Please approach the center podium, identify yourself for the record, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you will be given not more than two minutes.
Jacqueline Wetchy, Pittsburgh resident number nine. Several days ago, I put up a poll on discussing Pittsburgh Now asking, "On Tuesday, what should the city council ask the state to spend more money on?" As of 3:00 PM today, 36 people said paving the roads, 6 people said low-income housing, 6 people said a giant statue of Mayor Skwalia, and one person said public schools. No one voted for the state universities option, and you shouldn't vote for this resolution either. Resources are limited, and other needs are greater.
Dr. Rata Coco?
Reila.
Reila.
Hello, my name is Reila Jackie T. Coco. I'm a Pittsburgh resident from Ward III. I am here to advocate for the Higher Ed for All Resolution and the Cherish Act, and these matter to my family because I've been a professor at Pittsburgh State and member of our faculty union since 2004. My husband is currently an adult student at Mount Wachusett. One of my daughters also attended Pittsburgh State University. Together, my two daughters took on more than $50,000 in debt, in student loan debt. When my older daughter attended Pittsburgh State from 2007 to 2011, as a single parent, I struggled to pay her school bill. When my younger daughter was ready to attend college in 2014, Pittsburgh State was too expensive for us to afford. We actually got a better deal at a private university. Since 2001, state support for higher ed institutions has declined by 30%, and direct support to students has also decreased by one-third. Renovation and upkeep of campus buildings is even passed on to students. For example, there's a $1,500 per year fee at Pittsburgh State. The average student loan debt has doubled in 10 years. It's now more than $32,000 a year. If residents of the Commonwealth cannot afford higher education at our state universities, where will they go? Where will the drivers of innovation and productivity for our state come from? As a professor and union member, I've witnessed the plight of our underpaid part-time faculty earning $2,000 per course. Dedicated community college instructors often teach many courses at multiple institutions to cobble together a decent salary. Worst of all, they're provided no health insurance or retirement benefits. If we wish to retain qualified faculty at our higher ed institutions, we must provide them compensation that aligns with the cost of living in Massachusetts. Finally, winning higher ed for all through the legislature and budget will support our local economy in many ways. Children of Pittsburgh families will be able to attend K-12 and university debt-free and later live and work in our area. Universities like Pittsburgh State will thrive and contribute to their local economies as cultural centers and drivers of innovation and productivity. And faculty and staff working in state higher ed will have sufficient salaries to set down roots, work, and retire in the Commonwealth. I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. David Thibault Munoz.
Good evening, distinguished city councillors, Mayor Skwilia. Thank you for considering support for the resolution you all have before you tonight, and thank you for listening. Special thank you to Councillor Schultz for bringing it forward to the council this evening. My name is David Thibault Munoz. I'm a city councillor and gardener. Actually, you all probably know me from my work with my students on the Pittsburgh abolitionist park project. And I'm actually here tonight in my role as the Massachusetts Teacher Association Senate District Coordinator. And as you may or may not know, there are hundreds of MTA members that live in Pittsburgh. So the said resolution calls on the state legislature to pass the Cherish Act, which would be a great support to our students and in turn, our economies. If the Cherish Act passes, the state legislature, college graduates would enter our local and state economies with hundreds of thousands less in debt following the completion of their degrees. Passage of the Cherish Act would also be a great support to our adjunct part-time faculty who make up more than 60% of community college faculty statewide and who are currently having to piece together their salaries by teaching more than a full load of classes due to their extremely low per-class wages and who lack also, because they're part-time, health care and dental care and other benefits for themselves and their families. If you pass the resolution tonight, you will be the sixth political body in the state to do so after Lawrence, Attleboro, Boston, Amherst, and Somerville, with many other municipalities in this pipeline statewide to do the same, including Lemonsdale and Gardiner, which are currently drafting similar resolutions. Thanks so much for listening, and thanks for considering passage of this resolution.
Is there anyone else who was not able to access the sheet before we took it? All right, then we will move on to our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM in room 205 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. Pittsburgh Ward I City Councillor Bernie Schultz is also hosting a Ward I community meeting on Monday, April 8th, 2024, at 6:30 PM here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. Council on Aging Executive Director Amanda Keck and Commissioner of Public Works and City Engineer Nick Erickson will make presentations and then answer questions following their presentations. In addition to Pittsburgh Ward I residents, all other Pittsburgh residents are welcome to attend the meeting. Please note that the city of Pittsburgh is working on a digital equity plan and is in need of your input. The goal of the plan is to address the digital needs of the community. This includes access to affordable internet, access to devices within the home, and skills needed to use those devices safely and effectively. The city is requesting that all Pittsburgh residents complete a survey in order to provide more information about how we can address your individual needs. The surveys are available in multiple languages on the city's website, www.fitchburgma.gov, under Community Development and Planning. If you need access to the physical form, those forms are available in the City Hall lobby, or you can reach out to the Community Development Department at (978) 629-1899 for a copy of the survey. All of your help is greatly appreciated. Parks and Recreation will be hosting the annual Easter egg hunt and photos with the Easter Bunny Saturday, March 23rd, 2024, at 12:00 PM at Park Hill Park and Sam Pollock Community Playground, Pratt Road. The event is for ages 3 to 8, and is weather permitting. If anyone would like to make donations to the event, please contact recreation@fitchburgma.gov. There is also a Ward III meeting hosted by Councillor Andrew Kuchar Thursday, March 21st, at 6:00 PM here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. Second Chance is presenting the Jeffrey P. Stevens Low-Cost Pet Vaccine Clinic at the Pittsburgh Fire Department on Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Visit Second Chance on the web to make a reservation and pay $22 for a microchip, $18 for rabies, and other vaccinations. And I'd also just like to say that all of our thoughts go out to our colleague, Councillor Fleming, who has recently lost her father. We have now the report of the Appointments Committee. Councillor Kuchar?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We took up numerous appointments. First, new appointment to the Pittsburgh Airport Commission, term to expire March 19th, 2027, Eric Takal, which was unanimously approved. New appointments to the Pittsburgh Airport Commission, term to expire March 19th, 2027, Paul Hathaway, which was unanimously approved. Two new appointments to the full-time police officers for the Pittsburgh Police Department, Nathan George and Benjamin Lima, both stood unanimously approved. New appointment for permanent full-time firefighter for the city of Pittsburgh, Benjamin E. Nealon, which was unanimously approved. There was a reappointment to the Pittsburgh Airport Commission, term to expire March 19th, 2027, Clayton R. Raymond, which was unanimously approved. There was a reappointment to the Pittsburgh Agricultural Commission, term to expire April 1st, 2027, Evan Halsted, which was a stalemate, 2 to 2. Reappointment, Pittsburgh Board of Parks Commissioner, term to expire April 1st, 2029, Colby O'Brien, which stood approved. And reappointment to the Pittsburgh Board of Parks Commissioners, term to expire April 1st, 2029, David C. Brooks, which was unanimously approved.
Thank you very much. Given that there was one item deadlocked and therefore on which the council cannot simply accept the recommendation of the committee, I would ask that a motion be made regarding all items except the reappointment of Evan Halsted.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Got a question for both chiefs?
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
All right, go ahead, councillor.
I was just wondering, because I couldn't hear that good, I was over there, I didn't have the hearing aids on. I was just wondering, did I hear you say correctly that they're going to be Pittsburgh employees and living here in Pittsburgh, both of you?
Say that again?
Are they going to be living in Pittsburgh if we say yes?
They're not required to live in Pittsburgh. It's always suggested they do live in Pittsburgh. They fall under civil service rules, and under civil service, they have to live within 15 miles of the police station. So it's always added bonus if they live in the city. One of them is from Pittsburgh, and the other one is from the West area.
Okay. It's it?
Ward 6, though.
The best one. I'll renew my motion.
Second? All right, I have a motion. And second, to accept and act upon the recommendations of the Appointments Committee as to all items excluding the reappointment of Evan Halsted. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We now have before us the reappointment of Evan Halsted, term to expire April 1st, 2027, to the Pittsburgh Agricultural Commission. Though they are certainly not obligated to do so, I would, if my colleagues are willing, who voted in opposition, I would be curious to hear their reasons. Councillor Kuchar?
It was nothing personal against Mr. Halsted. I know him, he's a Ward resident, he's a good person. There was a lot of issues that people have brought to my attention in regards to open meeting law, which Mr. Halsted did speak on that, that he is learning that. There were some issues in regards to preservation of records of the meetings, as well as FOIA requests that went unanswered. You know, that's why I voted in the negative in regards to that. It has nothing to do with him personally, he has a good heart, and you know, his intentions are well met, but I had an issue with him being the chair of the Agricultural Commission with these problems. These are issues that the city of Pittsburgh doesn't need, and you know, I understand it's an educational lesson for him, but it was deeply concerning some of the residents approaching me in regards to getting access to minutes and recordings.
All right. So I'll just note, because this is something that I deal with fairly directly for the city, that the chairs of various commissions are not the records access officers for any records requests. Those go through the clerk's office, and if they are not directed to the clerk's office, then they may not be properly acted upon. To the best of my understanding, a person who is not a records access officer has no particular obligation to forward a records request to the clerk. That being said, it sounds to me like the issue, speaking only to your concerns, of course, Councillor Gina Tally's may be different, and that's perfectly all right, but speaking to your concerns, it seems that the problem, if any, might be more with his status as chair than his membership on the commission. Again, not that, you're not in the hot seat or anything, councillor, but I'm just curious if your objections would stand if he were not going to be the chair.
I really don't think it truly matters, but you know, if he wasn't the chair, I think I would be more willing to vote in his favor.
All right. I'll just say for my part, I haven't worked with Mr. Halsted extensively, but I had a chance to work with him briefly on a critical matter during my brief stint as acting mayor, and I've found him to be, as you said, a good guy, very personally responsible, and I think certainly any errors were inadvertent, would have been inadvertent. I will say, those laws can be tough to keep up with, particularly if, you know, a member of a board or commission doesn't have a legal background. So personally, while I certainly agree that it's something that we don't want to have future problems with, I wouldn't be inclined to hold that against him for his reappointment. We've all made mistakes under the city's, under the state's various open government laws over the course of our 10 years. I'm sure each one of us has in one way or another. So I will be supporting it, but obviously, it is before the council, and I'm just one vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anyone on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In opposition? Two in opposition. Motion carries eight to two for the reappointment of Mr. Halsted. Next, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Councillor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. We reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Thank you. Actually, I keep missing this meeting after meeting lately. I need to have the new police and firefighters come up to be sworn in and introduced. I apologize, we're very happy to have you here, I just sometimes forget the order of operations while I'm up here.
Mr. President, before you break, this is an opportunity for me to introduce both of our new police officers, Benjamin Lima and Nathan George, and with their appointment tonight, they will be joining our ranks tomorrow as full-time police officers for the city of Pittsburgh.
And can I just inquire, because I haven't had the chance to meet either of the gentlemen yet, which is which?
Benjamin Lima, sir. It's a privilege. Nathan George.
Good to meet you both, and welcome aboard.
And as I told the Appointments Committee, we're in a fortunate situation where both of these officers come to us full academy trained, and they're going to begin their field training tomorrow in uniform, working as police officers, starting their field training.
All right, excellent. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear them in? I'll ask the council clear the bench. And friends and family, feel free to take as many photographs as desired. We will resume when you're done.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Because of my knowledge and ability.
Because of my knowledge and ability.
Performing the charge of all the duties.
Performing the charge of all the duties.
And coming to call me as a permanent full-time police officer.
And I'm going to call me as a permanent full-time police officer.
For the city of Pittsburgh, solemnly.
For the city of Pittsburgh, solemnly. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Because of my knowledge and ability.
Because of my knowledge and ability.
Performing the charge of all the duties.
Performing the charge of all the duties.
And coming to call me as a permanent full-time police officer.
And I'm going to call you a permanent full-time police officer.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh, solemnly. Thank you.
(applause)
Barbara? Give me that camera. We need to be in that. Wait, this is the room we have. She might. What was that? Yeah, yeah. Welcome, my friend. Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
Thanks. Congratulations. Congratulations, welcome to the party.
We're lucky, yeah? Forget about Ward 6, on the Ward team.
Ward 6 is the place to be.
You're my neighbor.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Your brother could be twins.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
You're leaving now?
Yeah. What was that? Yeah, yeah.
Welcome, my friend. Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations again.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome to the party.
We're lucky, yeah? Forget about Ward 6, on the Ward team.
Ward 6 is the place to be.
You're my neighbor.
Oh, yeah. Let's. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You and your brother could be twins.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
You're leaving now?
Yeah. What was that? Yeah, yeah.
Welcome, my friend. Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations again.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome to the party.
We're lucky, yeah? Forget about Ward 6, on the Ward team.
Ward 6 is the place to be.
You're my neighbor.
Oh, yeah. Let's. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
You and your brother could be twins.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
You're leaving now?
Yeah. What was that? Yeah, yeah.
Welcome, my friend. Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Congratulations again.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome to the party.
We're lucky, yeah? Forget about Ward 6, on the Ward team.
Ward 6 is the place to be.
You're my neighbor.
Oh, yeah. Let's. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
You and your brother could be twins.
(laughing).
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
If there's no objection, it is unanimously approved. The corridor study will be placed on file clerk's office. And then we have the annual report of the Pittsburgh redevelopment authority. If there is no objection, we will waive a full reading of the report. I do note that Megan Donahue is on Zoom to answer any questions that councilors may Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Donahue, for being here. And this report will also be placed on file with the city clerk's office. We have the annual report of the fire department. I see that the chief has left, so I will assume that he didn't have any remarks he wished to make on this, and it will end with the consent of council. It will also have the reading waived and be placed on file. And then we come to the report of the city property committee. Counselor Craigin.
Yes, sir. So we met last week. Make sure this is here. So we met last week. We had two items on our agenda. The first was 12 Park Street. Executive Director Murphy is here, and we made the decision that after acquiring it through foreclosure and land court, and this is in Ward 6, that we would put it forward for the purpose of auction. So we are just going to put that piece of property out for auction. It's, how do we say this? It is buildable, but just barely. It would need a special. Liz, I'm still learning this. Ah, here we go. City property to be sold at auction. Liz, can you say a couple of words about this? Because it's a quirky piece, because it's up there by the comments.
It's an infill lot.
Gotcha.
So as an infill lot, it's only, they can only get a building permit approved through a special permit. So we felt like having that special permit requirement really meant it could go to an auction as opposed to an RFP where we might want to be a little more selective about what can be built there. The special permit sort of serves that same purpose.
All right. And just to clarify for members of the council and the public, the infill lot provision addresses lots that are over 5,000 but under whatever the minimum lot size for the area is, which I believe we only have it in residential C, so that would be 10,000, correct?
I think so. I believe so.
So basically, it's an undersized lot.
Yep.
That is still buildable if the owner can satisfy the zoning board, that it will be good for the neighborhood. Counselor Craigin?
Yep. Our second item, and I'm going to ask that we, we're going to have to separate these two items, because one of them, it just kind of last-minute amendments happened, not amendments, but last-minute information came forward. So as for 1341 Ring Road easement, they just, long story short for colleagues on the council, it's about eight acres that are going to be divided from the existing Woodridge housing, you know, what? I mean, it's a housing conglomeration, so it's not a motor home, but it's a community that will next get a community function room, but at present cannot move forward without the easement being taken up by the city. And there was some back and forth about, are we going to have a Butters, you know, take up the easement? But it was decided, and again, great minds worked on this, including, you know, zoning board of appeals, president, sorry, Chair Christine Tree. And what happened is, we did vote in the affirmative. City Property Subcommittee voted in the affirmative as to the easement. But in the intervening days, the property owner, an abutting property owner, changed their mind and is no longer in agreement with the change to the conservation restriction relating to existing drainage. And this, I believe, thank you, President Zarella, it needs to be a motion to recommit. So on these items, which are 181-23, we can certainly, in the fullness of time, have the motion forward. However, because there was an objection by an abutter after the fact, after the meeting, City Property is going to need to meet again, per Christine Tree, per city solicitor, and take another look at this. And we need to do it sooner rather than later, because a timeline or a time clock is much more.
So, just a moment, counselor. So just to fill in a bit more backstory on that, because I've been on the chains as well.
Yep.
Email chains. There was a change made to the proposed easement by, at City Property.
At City Property.
Which was, at the time, thought to be consented to by all parties. Because this is a taking of an easement rather than something more routine, it does require, unless we want to go through an actual takings process, the consent of the property owner. So if that consent is not present, we need to go back to the drawing board and see if we can rework it. So at the time, the recommendation, the joint recommendation of the city solicitor, the zoning board chair, Counselor Craigin and myself, is that on 00524, we entertain a motion to recommit the matter back to City Property.
I've moved. Second?
I have, I did have, are your questions, councilors, internal, or do you have questions for anyone outside the council?
Internal.
Okay. Then we won't, they wouldn't, excuse me, we don't need to withdraw the motion. Counselor DiNatali?
Is this the development that won't end until I'm 85?
(laughing) I've heard descriptions to that effect, but I...
This is the one that just, we just keep building houses until we run out of land?
I...
And then we get more land and build more houses and...
I don't want to speak to any particular characterization of the...
It's been flooding me for months on this, from people in that area. I just, does this matter, being held, because is this part of that whole process the ZBAs been going through with putting a stop to all the development up there?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this easement is pursuant to a decision, a condition placed by the zoning board.
And the property owner, one of the property owners, does not like the agreement as before us?
That is what we have been informed through city solicitor.
Do we know why?
They're fleshing that out. At this time, we can't, we have a motion in front of us, so, and we're also past public comment, so we can't take public...
We don't, we don't know why.
Yeah, there, the city solicitor is in touch with the property owner to flesh out what needs to be changed.
I'm on the committee, but I was unfortunately not present at the meeting due to my, one other work commitment, but...
All right. And Counselor Green?
Speaking to this specifically, where it came before us as to be adopted, is it now a matter that that will then flip the vote to not be adopted? I mean, was the vote that close, that if we send it back to subcommittee, that it's going to, there might be a change in the adopting as it is presented, based on the recommendation before us, or not?
So Counselor Craigin, certainly as chair, you're welcome to address that.
Thank you. No, this, this is, we passed all of these, we passed both of these items unanimously. And we did hear from a Butters, we did hear from Joanne Hamburg, Joanne Hamburg, over there, whose project it is. And it, we did not hear objections at the meeting at that time. However, and I think Attorney Tree made the comment that, you know, sometimes on reflection, people, you know, have second thoughts, and we're just need to have, we need to schedule a meeting as soon as we can, and this hopefully, you know, will happen next week, would be ideal, because I know that we're working on a timeline, which is April, very, very aware of how important that is. So I just put it out to the clerk's office this afternoon when I got the email and said, what days, what here, you know, what days can we do? So seeing that we may not have Clerk Valotta Simeoni back until April 2nd, I think between Betsy and Lilly, if you guys can help monitor the date wrangling for the next city property, we're doing our best to have this next week.
So, basically, the idea, Counselor Green, would be that this is not being returned to the committee to allow the committee members to reconsider their opinions so much as to allow the additional working out of the situation between the city, the zoning board, and the property owner, so as to find a solution that everyone is agreeable to, since we can't take an easement that the property owner isn't willing to give, or with terms that the property owner is not going to accept.
It's just...
Or an abutter. It's...
It's one sentence.
Okay, okay. I understand, but unfortunately, I can't take comment from the audience right now. We have a process for this. So it is the recommendation of the city solicitor that we ought not to proceed without considering this further due to this new objection. Now, the details of it are not something that I personally am immersed in, either on the zoning board end or the city property end, but given that there's a consensus among the, basically, the three people in the city government who are most familiar with it, that it needs to be gone over again, that's why this recommendation is before us at the moment. So our vote tonight would not be to accept or reject the recommendation of the committee just to send it back to the committee.
At that opportunity, whenever the next meeting is scheduled, will there be, there will be opportunity for a Butters zoning, city property, and the city agencies that are involved to comment at that point, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And potentially come up with a different recommendation for us?
I mean, I don't speak for the chair, but, but that would be the normal process, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion and second to recommit this matter to city property. Anyone else on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Passes unanimously. We still have 181-23, the designation of the 12 Park Street parcel for auction.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation to send 12 Park Street to auction through the Community Development Department and/or Treasures Department. Anyone on the motion? If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Report of the Finance Committee, Counselor DiNatali. And I'll ask that we hold the CDBG separate.
Finance Committee met last Wednesday, March 13th, and took up the following. 4922, that the city appropriates the sum of $65,000 from available funds and credited to Law Labor Council and Law Damages Persons and Property. That was approved. 5024, order to be hereby appropriated the sum of $72,110.97 from reserved for appropriation PEG access expenses to support capital needs of the FATV broadcast location. Approved. 5124, to appropriate a loan order of $39,500,000 for the next phase of the sewer separation project as mandated under the federal consent decree with the EPA. That was approved. 5224, to approve the expenditure of grant funds by the Board of Health from the United Way of North Central Massachusetts for $2,000 to supplement the winter warming center on Mechanic Street. 5324 was in order to approve the expenditure of state earmark funds allocated by the Department of Conservation Recreation for $75,000 for the rehabilitation of the youth soccer field at Coolidge Park. And Order 5424, to approve the transfer of $96,000 through $49,000 from CDBG year 47 Police Department 88 Park and Improvements to CDBG year 48 Parks Playgrounds Improvements. That was approved. And holding out CDBG.
All right. Just one moment. There appears to be an issue with our recording.
(inaudible) somewhere?
Is it, is it something we should wait on or proceed?
Can I repeat your cooperation on this? Give it a moment, please?
Certainly. We'll hold ourselves in recess for at least a few minutes to give FATV a chance to work out the broadcast issue.
So I've read the committee report excluding CDBG.
Yes, thank you. Any questions from councilors on any of those items?
Oh, what?
Items 4924 through 5424, excluding CDBG.
Oh, no. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Finance Committee with respect to all items excluding the year 50 Community Development block grants. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, passes unanimously. Counselor DiNatali, the CDBG.
So, Mr. President, the CDBG year 50 package for $955,000 was favorably recommended by the committee in total, but there was one project, the downtown coordinator, which did get a three-to-one vote. But every, every project on, in the package was recommended to be approved by the, by the committee, save that one was not unanimous. All of those were unanimous.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out to the committee, to members of this council. I've been on this council for 10 years, and I'm tired of hearing and saying, is the mayor's CBG? It's not the mayor's CBG. It's the City of Pittsburgh's CBGs. And if we don't agree with the planning, the permit, or the mayor's recommendation, we should start turning these down, because it's not right, because it's not the mayor's CBGs. It's the people of Pittsburgh, and it's made that way to benefit the people of Pittsburgh and to help the people of Pittsburgh. So I just want to let you know, because I keep on getting tired of hearing that, because if I feel this way, why have a public hearing and why discuss this in full length if it's the mayor's CBG? I can't see wasting my time if we're all going to feel the same way. I'm sorry, but I just, I just can't figure it out that I want to sit here and say it's the CBG and I don't agree with the $5,000 for view assistance and the other stuff.
Counselor, you're absolutely free at any time to vote against any item. And if I recall correctly, during my tenure on the council, there's been at least one item, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, it's always been your committee, there's been at least one CDBG item during my tenure that has been cut by the council. So it definitely is possible. The fact that in any given year, a majority of councilors chooses not to does not reflect a standard of unthinking deference, just a decision by a majority that there isn't anything we'd like to cut. Counselor DiNatali, I know you had your hand...
During the committee meeting, no committee members made the argument that they're supporting these things because it's simply what the mayor wants. I mean, we all are aware that these are recommendations that go through planning and the mayor's office to us. It's the same argument you made, counsel, for the budgets. You know, there's nothing stopping any of us from putting reductions on the table to have then further discussion on reallocation, but most of these projects have been longstanding, and you certainly, sir, have never shied away from voting against something you don't agree with. So, I mean, your point is well-taken, but the committee did not give their stamp of approval on this because it was simply the mayor's prerogatives. It's in fact beyond the mayor's office. It's planning, it's these organizations, and that's it. And I think everyone on the council knows that. That's it. Counselor Green?
Again, just a reminder that there is an application process that happens every year that this comes forward, and that the applicants are vetted through at least three different city departments before they make it even onto the application for us to approve or deny. So it's not like it's just rubber stamped, because, you know, if you apply, you may receive it. If you apply, you may not receive it. So it's all a matter of, for our nonprofits who need help in maybe bridging the funding gap, this is an opportunity to do that.
Certainly. We'll hold ourselves in recess for at least a few minutes to give FATV a chance to work out the broadcast issue.
So I've read the committee report excluding CDBG.
Yes, thank you. Any questions from councilors on any of those items?
On what?
Items 49-24 through 54-24 excluding CDBG.
Oh, no. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve and adopt the recommendations of the finance committee with respect to all items excluding the year 50 community development block grants. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, passes unanimously. Councilor Janatali, the CDBG.
So, Mr. President, the CDBG year 50 package for $955,000 was favorably recommended by the committee in total, but there was one project, the downtown coordinator, which did get a three to one vote. But every, every project on, in the package was recommended to be approved by the, by the committee, save that one was not unanimous. All of those were unanimous.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out to the committee, to members of this council, I've been on this council for 10 years, and I'm tired of hearing saying, "It's the mayor's CBG." It's not the mayor's CBG. It's the city of Pittsburgh's CBGs. And if we don't agree with the planning, the planning, or the mayor's recommendation, we should start turning these down because it's not right, because it's not the mayor's CBGs. It's the people of Pittsburgh, and it's made that way to benefit the people of Pittsburgh and to help the people of Pittsburgh. So I just want to let you know, because I keep on getting tired of hearing that, because if I feel this way, why have a public hearing and why discuss this in full length if it's the mayor's CBG? I can't see wasting my time if, if we're all going to feel the same way. I'm sorry, but I just, I just can't figure it out that I want to sit here and say it's the CBG and I don't agree with the $5,000 for view assistance and the other stuff.
Counselor, you're absolutely free at any time to vote against any item, and if I recall correctly, during my tenure on the council, there's been at least one item, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, it's always been your committee, there's been at least one CDBG item during my tenure that has been cut by the council. So it definitely is possible, the fact that in any given year, a majority of councilors chooses not to, does not reflect a standard of unthinking deference, just a decision by a majority that there isn't anything we'd like to cut. Counselor Janatali, I know you had your hand.
During the committee meeting, no committee members made the argument that they're supporting these things because it's simply what the mayor wants. I mean, we, we all are aware that these are recommendations that go through planning and the mayor's office to us. It's the same argument you made, Counsel, for the budgets. You know, there's nothing stopping any of us from putting reductions on the table to have then further discussion on reallocation, but most of these projects have been longstanding, and you certainly, sir, have never shied away from voting against something you don't agree with. So, I mean, your point is well taken, but the committee did not give their stamp of approval on this because it was simply the mayor's prerogatives. It's in fact beyond the mayor's office. It's, it's planning, it's these organizations, and, and that's, that's it. And I think everyone on the council knows that. That's it. Counselor Green?
Again, just a reminder that there is an application process that happens every year that this comes forward, and that the applicants are vetted through at least three different city departments before they make it even onto the application for us to approve or deny. So it, it's not like it's just rubber stamped, because, you know, i-if you apply, you may receive it, if you apply, you may not receive it. So it's all a matter of, for our nonprofits who need help in maybe bridging the funding gap, this is an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second, Counselor Boishman on the motion.
A motion on number Y, the downtown coordinator. I'm totally against it.
All right.
I just want to make that clear, I think Marcus already said it once, once before.
Mm-hmm. At the moment, the motion is to approve the recommendation as to the total package. It is entirely up to the maker of the motion whether to pull that item or not. At the moment, we have the motion before us. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition, passes nine to one. Report of the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Green.
Yes, we met this evening and took up the following petitions. 046-24, Sasha Automotive LLC, to petition for a Class II dealer's license located at 285 River Street. That was Lauren and Jorge Nario, and that petition was granted unanimously five to zero. 221-23, Counselor Boishman is requesting a loading area at the senior center at Elm Street adjacent to the ramp for loading and unloading food and equipment without receiving a parket ticket. That was given leave to withdrawal unanimously five to zero, and Sergeant Boudreau will meet personally with the director of the senior center to see which direction they would now want to take that, whether in favor or not in favor. 034-24, Andrew Kuchar on behalf of Chris Knowles to install a stop sign at the bottom of Stickney Road at the intersection of Stickney and Ashburnham. That was given leave to withdrawal, five to zero. 035-24, Andrew Kuchar on behalf of Michael Kuchar to install stop, stop signs at the intersection of Stickney Road and Sheldon Road. A three-way stop may be necessary. That was also given leave to withdraw. And there are recommendations that the police chief will install the, the appropriate signage at those intersections, so it's not like there's not going to be any signage there. It'll be appropriate, and also noted that I'm going to work with Sergeant Boudreau at the city clerk's office to come up with a, a definition or a better understanding of when signs can be placed in the hands of Chief Martino to decide yes or no, or whether they have to go to public safety as far as regulatory signs. So that's where that stands.
Thank you, Counselor, and I'll just note that I would love to, I'd be kept in the loop on that effort as well, as there's been a great need for sort of guides and standardization of multiple processes across the city over the last many years, and this would be a logical step to add.
Right, we've done that. I've worked with the, and the city clerk's office on what, you know, what constitutes public safety versus public works, so we're, we're getting there on a standard operating procedure.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
Just want to tell everybody that 221-23, the chief and I and Andy and Rick Boishman came up to an agreement, a very gentleman agreement on this issue, and he's going to resolve the issue.
Excellent.
So it's going to be good for everybody.
That's what I like to hear.
So I just want you to know.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the report.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the report of the Public Safety Committee and adopt its recommendations. If there are no objections, I'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved unanimously. I have a request, a request for suspension of the rules on 085-24. This is the ordinary appropriation of PEG access funds to FATV. The reason for the request for suspension is that it, this particular swatch of funding was held up through, for bureaucratic reasons, and FATV frankly needs it as their operating budget sooner rather than later.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I, I need a motion to suspend first.
Motion to suspend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for two-thirds vote?
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Janatali?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Thank you very much.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 085-24. If there are no objections, oh, Counselor Cruz on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to give my, my ringing endorsement to FATV. Compared to the other communities, they are far and above the services they provide. I was talking to Executive Director Nate Glenny today. Last year, they provided over 600 hours of programming for the city of Pittsburgh, 15 original shows, many other things that come in comparatively to other communities. You know, we, we, sometimes we throw a lot of fair and knock comparisons around. I can say without a shadow of a doubt, FATV is, is a shining example in the area, and I commend them for that and their hard work, especially Dan back there who's got to put up with these long meetings every week, and I'm fully in support of this. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would certainly second that. I, I have long believed that FATV is one area, not the only, but one area in which Pittsburgh, in my view, is a gold standard for communities in Massachusetts and really elsewhere as well. It is difficult to overstate the level of services that we receive that are unheard of in most communities. That being said, if there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. With the consent of council, I'll waive the reading on 086 and 087-24. Those will stand referred to finance. Next up, we have 082-24, a resolution which, as it does not have a subject matter committee, is before us this evening, and I will read the text of it for the council's consideration. A resolution in support of higher ed for all. Whereas Massachusetts public colleges and universities are among the state's greatest resources, whereas public colleges and universities are anchor institutions that are a significant part of the foundation of our state's regional economies and are essential to drive economic growth and provide essential services in our cities and towns, whereas higher education is an important pathway to economic mobility and public university graduates are much more likely to remain in Massachusetts after graduation, starting families, contributing to the economy, and forming the fabric of our local communities, whereas public colleges and universities educate the majority of students of color and first-generation college students, and whereas there remain significant opportunity gaps demonstrated by lower college enrollments and completions, particularly for Latino and Black students, whereas tens of thousands of students in Massachusetts graduate from high school each year but do not enroll in college, and 700,000 adults in our Commonwealth have earned some college credits but have not completed their degrees, whereas new revenue from the Fair Share Amendment gives us the opportunity for transformative investments in public higher education that will remediate decades of underinvestment in higher, in public higher education by providing students with the opportunity to graduate from public higher education debt-free, providing supports for students that are critical to help them graduate, and investing in staff and faculty salaries so that our institutions can recruit and retain highly qualified educators who will be able to afford to live in the community in which they work. And whereas investing in public higher education institutions means investing in the students, faculty, and staff who are woven into our community and into our local economy, therefore be it resolved that the Pittsburgh City Council urges the legislature to pass the Cherish Act and support additional funding for public higher education, and provided that a copy of this resolution shall forthwith be sent to the state legislative delegation. The matter is before the council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was talking to a young lady over there, and I'll talk to you, I said it once before, I even said it to Andy. I don't mind supporting this, but I don't want to give it to the top people that make big bucks already. I'm tired of giving it to the top. When I play the Trump economics here where he starts from the top and it's about to diggle down, I don't want that to happen. You know, and if you, we're all worried about, you know, the students, and I am worried about the students, and I'll keep, I kept on saying for the last ten, five times I've been here, 10 times, and you keep on stopping me. Debt exclusion, Pittsburgh State should allow students to go to Pittsburgh State College interest-free, so many per year.
I, I understand.
Three million dollars or four million dollars at the end.
So I'll just note that this is a resolution in support of a state legislative enactment. We don't have any control on the council level as to the text of that enactment. We can just support it or not. I will note that I, I browsed the bill. I can't say I perused it carefully yet, but it does include a provision that prohibits tuition increases as a result of this additional funding. In other words, the funding, the, the additional monies from the state, the savings basically have to be passed on to the students. They can't pocket the money and continue to jack up tuitions. I will say, I, I share the sentiment that these, that whatever money the state invests in our higher education should not go to further inflating administrative salaries and so forth, though I can't speak to how much or how little that is an issue at any specific institution. But ultimately, I'm going to be supporting this because we have an example right here in Pittsburgh of the importance of public higher education to our own community. We see many people who are not originally from Pittsburgh graduating from Pittsburgh State and making a home in Pittsburgh. Yeah, notably, actually, I'll say at least two members, one current and one former of this city council that I'm aware of, probably more. And so I, I will be supporting this. And I'll yield the floor. I'm sorry, I saw a bunch of hands, I didn't mark them all down in order, but Vice President Van Hazinga?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have three children, my daughter is a sophomore at Pittsburgh High School now, and very soon we're going to have to make decisions about what she's going to do for college, and it's more than just an educational decision, it's a financial decision. With the cost of tuition and room and board well over $50,000 at many private universities, the availability of a public university or college education is a great resource in our city, and in our, in our state as a whole. And we really have to make sure that we're investing in public education, because the idea of grad, of her graduating from school, hundreds of thousand dollars in debt, is something that would saddle her for, for decades, and that's not a way to start your career as, as a professional, to go to work. You should be thinking about finding a job, about buying a home, starting a family, you know. You shouldn't have to have a noose around your neck that is, you're paying tuition for the next two decades. So if we can adequately fund public education in our state, we will reach tremendous benefits. We, Massachusetts benefits from a, a very educated workforce to begin with, and if we can continue that and make greater accessibility and affordability of publication, public education, it's, it's a great thing. So I will be supporting this, I encourage everyone else to as well.
I believe I had Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I started teaching at Pittsburgh State University in 1998. I retired in 2018. During that time, most of the stu, or majority of the students that I had in my class were first-generation college students. Many of them, and, and as I, the longer I taught, the more students in my class were students of color, and I was appalled. It used to be that a, a public higher education institution was a bargain, and I was appalled to learn that some of my students had student loans over $100,000 when, when they finished, or more. And, and that should not be happening. Massachusetts is, is better than that, and I wholeheartedly agree with this resolution and will support it.
Thank you. Counselor Kuchar? No, Counselor Schultz?
Yes, this resolution, as a, as a Pittsburgh State grad, where I, where I could be a commuter student and actually pay my way through school many years ago, that's not the case anymore, and the students are, many of them are saddled with, with unbelievable debt, and this would alleviate, alleviate that debt. It also would do things like help the adjunct faculty have benefits as one of the, I think David commented on during public comment, that they, they have to cobble together their, their health insurance, you know, and it's a, it's very difficult, and they, and they, they're, they're, they're teaching many classes more than the, some of the professors that are full-time. So there's a lot of, a lot of benefits to this, the buildings, just the adequate, you know, funding of, of public education. You know, it used to be, I think when I went to school as an undergraduate, it was like you paid 20% and the state paid 80%, and now that's pretty much been reversed over the last 20 years or, or more, where the students are paying 80% and the state is paying 20%. There's been, been many cuts to, to, to public education, higher education in the last number of years. So I'm fully in support of this, and I, and I know our state rep, Kuschmerick, and our state Senator Cronin are also very much in favor of this, of this act. So I urge everyone on the council to, to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I have you, Counselor Cruz, as well?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, like I said, I saw a bunch of hands and I didn't get a chance to mark them all down.
Quite all right, thank you, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to thank the gentleman from Ward 1 for putting this, this together and encouraging us to do this. I was, I jumped at the opportunity to, to co-sponsor this, and I look forward to, to passing it tonight. I, I think it's something that, you know, this body should consider doing more of. There's a lot of great legislation out there that could use additional support, and this particular one is, is a multifaceted approach that, you know, will help to support the econ, not only our students and our educators, but to support the economy, to diversify the workforce. There, there are many great things to, to this bill and the positive impact it can have across the Commonwealth. You know, it's, not only is it, as the points the gentleman from Ward 1 made, it's, you know, it's the, the interest rates as well. We have so many, we have so many people who are, who will finish their education, get their degree, whether or not they work in that field that they're educated in, will then pay down their loan over 10, 12, 15 years, and they learn that, and they learn that over time, all they've managed to do is, is pay some of the interest, and they haven't even begun to pay the total, the total, the total loans that they took out. So, you know, I don't think, certainly by no means think our public higher education is, is a broken system, but we have lost our way with a little bit in some of our institutions in the way that we provide for our students and support our students and our educators, and I'm in full support of this, and I again thank the gentleman from Ward 1 for, for putting it forward. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Janatali?
When it comes to resolutions like this, it upsets me not to have a resolution like this, but the fact that there are so many things that our state government is ignoring, and I would call it gross negligence at this point, where of course you can make arguments for this, that, or the other thing, but there are matters before this council and this city and our people that have been going on for 15 years and counting now. The state is already talking about issuing nine C cuts, cuts for next year's budget. You know, education keeps going up in terms of funding, the state budget right now is $56 billion. There is one program in this state that has been grossly negligent in addressed, being addressed by our state legislature, and that is Chapter 90, and for the great majority of Pittsburgh residents who are not in school and will not be going to school, they are being tortured every year in their pocketbooks because of the condition of our roads. That is entirely the state's fault, because when they create a program, and you see it with public education, this is a perfect example of what we're going through on the road issue. They set up these mechanisms and these systems and they don't properly fund them. They don't fund them properly until there is like a panic mode that sets in, because they're always reactionary. So where is this $56 billion going? So where is this $56 billion going? I can guarantee you that it's not being used efficiently. And when you have the Mass Municipal Association telling this legislature for 16 years that they are underfunding cities and towns by a factor of four on our road infrastructure, not Pittsburgh, the whole Commonwealth, and then I get resolutions like this. It's hard for me to prove these resolutions, not because I don't agree with them necessarily, because what about these other things that the state already knows about, and they're giving us the middle finger? Yes, they are. And so I know some of my colleagues may say, "Well, I'm not going to hold this hostage because of another..." Well, I am, because I have no faith in our legislature. There are many things that matter most to people that they thumb their nose at and cry poverty. They find the money when it's something they want to do. I had a gentleman in his 70s yesterday call me about this in Ward 2. Says, "How can you guys support resolutions like this when the state keeps underfunding us by so much on roads?" I said, "I hear you." I also told him that I wouldn't take your yes vote to mean you don't care about the roads or you don't agree. I told him, "Don't worry about that." His point to me, and I agree with him, is there are so many things the state's not addressing that impacts all residents in this city, and we're going to advocate for more bills to spend money that the state doesn't have, allegedly. They haven't. So I will not be supporting this, consistent with the last resolution we got, I didn't support either, because I am, this is my protest to our legislature, who continues to thumb their noses at the people of this Commonwealth. 15 years with no increase, and you see the byproduct of that. And I know we're told that there's some magic at the end of the rainbow coming up with some plan, but that's not where the money's coming from. It's from the state. You don't get that money from the state, those roads are going to get worse. And they have the money, $400 million is what they are underfunding cities and towns by. What's their budget? $56 billion. $400 million. Chump change. So they're cherry picking. And I feel bad for the people advocating for this, because it's a microcosm of these other issues. They wait until things get so far behind, they need to be told how to do their jobs. They set these programs up to fail. Don't create a program then if you're not going to appropriately fund it. So I am voting against this. I don't believe the legislature listens to us. I don't think my vote really matters, honestly. This is how I feel. Until I see some movement on that issue, I'm not supporting any resolution that they increase funding anywhere else, because at this point, I feel like I'm being treated like a fool, because they know, they ignore us, period, including our own representation. Thank you.
Counselor Cragan?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Counselor Deanna Tally. I think that the, I mean, I watched this really closely for the last 15 years, the lack of attention to the Chapter 90, the way that Pittsburgh has had to scramble for so many years for Chapter 70. I mean, the ESAR funds were great in the last three years, but we're facing the end of that now. But here's the thing, I'm really concerned about Pittsburgh State. I know that there aren't enough students up there right now. I know that the dormitories are not fully filled. I know that their cost of Pittsburgh State is just out of reach in a way that it wasn't like 10 or 15 years ago, certainly, you know, longer ago. And I know that there are so many businesses here and so many people working here that went to Pittsburgh State and add so much to Pittsburgh, and some of them are people who grew up in Pittsburgh, others come from outside of Pittsburgh, and they realize Pittsburgh is awesome and they want to stay, and they've gotten this great education at Pittsburgh State. So when I looked at this, my first thought was, yeah, of course, this makes all kinds of sense, because the tuition costs are so out of alignment with reality. I've lived in Southern California, and I've also lived in Missouri, and I can tell you that Southern California was really affordable 30 years ago, and then they systematically destroyed their public education, to the point where natives are paying similar amounts, going into similar kinds of debt for schooling that just, you know, 20 years ago was in the $3,000 to $5,000 a semester. And, you know, again, California has a GDP the same size of France. Massachusetts is not anywhere close to that, but I do know that not as many kids are going to Pittsburgh State. Why is that? They can't afford it. Well, that, I mean, once GE left in 98, Pittsburgh State became our largest employer, and that caused a lot of disequilibrium in this city, and I know a lot of you remember it and a lot of you saw it. So I will be voting for this, because I am always in favor of affordable education. And I appreciate what Counselor Schultz said. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Deanna Tally, and I do support what Counselor Cragan said. But, you know, with the money needed elsewhere, especially our roads, and you can even look at Ms. Wetchy's poll that she took on Facebook, there's a great majority of people who would rather see this money go towards the roads rather than the Cherish Act. But that being said, I wouldn't be where I am if it wasn't for Mount Wachusett Community College, giving me a start off at, you know, out of Narikansett High School, then I matriculated to Pittsburgh State, State of Pittsburgh State, got my bachelor's, and eventually went to law school. So if it wasn't for the public education, I wouldn't be where I am today. That's why I'm not going to vote for this, and I'm not going to vote against it. I'm abstaining from it.
Counselor, we don't have an option to abstain in this council's rules.
I have to say that I'm going to vote against it.
All right. I'd just like to say, I completely agree that there are many other things, roads first among them, that the state has dramatically neglected. I also agree that the state wastes a lot of money. I don't think that this is one of the things that would be wasted money, which is why I'll be supporting this. I would also support a resolution that says, "Give us that Chapter 90 money. Stop with these pet projects here and there and put it towards the roads." Because like I said, there are a lot of, there are a lot of initiatives that the state undertakes that some are just pointless, period. Others are very worthwhile, but not as important as core functions like infrastructure, education, and so forth. And so some of those, if the state is saying they don't have money to increase the funding of Chapter 90, cut some of those things that are less important. But I don't think that this is one of those things that is less important. I will say, I am, no matter who fields it or who answers it, I put no stock whatsoever in Facebook polls. They're self-selected, they're unscientific, they have no validity except tracking who happened to be online at the appropriate time and felt inclined to click a button. That is, I grew up in the survey industry, literally grew up in the survey industry. The idea of an informal poll on social media, it's, I don't want to be unduly harsh, but I don't think I'm being unduly harsh if I say it's utterly worthless. I'm interested in what our constituents have to say, but taking a social media poll is not the way to find that out. So I will be supporting this. Like I said, I would also fully support a resolution that anyone wanted to bring forth in encouraging the state to invest more in our roads, encouraging the state to cut programs that simply are not of value to the city of Pittsburgh and to the constituency more broadly. I do think the council could participate more broadly than we currently do on state matters, as Counselor Cruz noted, although I would caution the council that, in my opinion at least, speaking only for myself, I do feel that we should refrain from having resolutions on state matters that are not of direct import to the city of Pittsburgh. We don't want to make the city council into a debating forum for general political matters that aren't really directly within our purview, but this is. You know, we have Pittsburgh State. If we didn't have Pittsburgh State, then I would say this may be one of the issues that is important to the state but not of direct import to the city of Pittsburgh and therefore not directly relevant to the city council. But we do have Pittsburgh State. They're our largest employer, they're also our, you know, as has been mentioned many times, they're also, I suppose you could say, a feeder for acquiring and keeping local talent. So I'll be supporting this, but I agree, the state is in gross dereliction of many of its other responsibilities, and I think that needs to change. I have spoken to our local delegation, they agree. But, you know, there's only so much that one person in each chamber can accomplish on their own. That said, I have Counselor Cruz for the second time?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for bringing up a good point about the resolutions needing to pertain to Pittsburgh. I think that's a point well noted. And I'd like to thank the gentleman from Mountonley Road for his input as well. I agree with many of those comments of, you know, the failings of the increase of Chapter 90 funding, the infrastructure failings that we're seeing here in our city. And I would just like to say, I would love to work with the council of Mountonley Road on that particular resolution to the state, if he's so willing to do so, to draw more attention to this matter, to send to the governor if that's the right idea. President Zarella, you alluded to that possibility, took the words right out of my mouth, so thank you for that. But I think it's something that we should consider doing. I think if there's one thing we can all agree here on this council is that, you know, we need to do a better job with our roads and advocating to the legislature and the administration. And a resolution might be a very good way to start with that, or a letter that we can sign together through you, Mr. President. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I appreciate all the support from the councils and your support, Council President Zarella, but I also would like to mention that it's not just students from Pittsburgh that attend Pittsburgh State University. I would hope that other city councils in the Montezuma region would also support this resolution, so I just wanted to add that. I yield the floor.
Thank you. All right, do we, seeing that I have no one else waiting to speak, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In opposition? Three in opposition. Motion carries seven to three. We have, one moment, please. We have two further petitions, 08324 and 08424. Both stand referred to public works. With consent of council, I will waive the reading, seeing no objection. That concludes our business for the evening.
Motion adjourned.
I'll take that as a motion of second and unanimous consent. We are adjourned.